Well, good morning. We have lots of smiling faces with us this morning. It's good to see everybody here. We're here for the Marion County Weekly Board of Commissioners meeting. It's Wednesday, December 14th, 2016. We're in the Courthouse Square at 555 Court Street, Northeast Salem. And if you will join us, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we're having some technical difficulties with our computers up here, but there may be some people coming in and out to help us with that. But, in the meantime, we're going to go ahead. Let's see, do we have anybody signed up for public comment at this time? Nobody's signed up. All right, so we'll go right into our presentation with the Student Recycled Art Calendar Awards. And Alan Pennington is here. Alan, it's always good to see you.
Thank you.
Yeah? Welcome.
So, I'm pinch-hitting today because I want to give a shout-out to my colleagues, Griselda Puga, who's one that is in charge of this program of the recycled art calendar for us. And she went and had a baby, so she's home with maternity leave. She had a baby boy, so...
That's an excuse is...
I know. It's pretty lame, I know. And the other one is Jessica Ramey, who also helps out, so they asked me to come in and do part of this for them, so I'm here. So, anyway, we're fortunate, we have four students and a teacher here from Marion County who'll be honored today for their artwork that was selected to be published in the 2017 Student Recycle Art Calendar poster. In our never-ending effort to promote waste reduction and reuse here in Marion County, we teamed up with the Mid Valley Garbage and Recycling Association to produce this year's Student Recycle Art Calendar poster contest. So, beginning back in April, a little over 160 students submitted their illustrations with the theme "Less Is More." And the students were encouraged to think of ways in which they can help prevent waste at school and at home. And we want to just point out that the committee selected the winners not only based on their artistic abilities, but also on the content of their message. And for their endeavors, each of the winning students will receive a gift card and a nice art set to help them further their artistic abilities. So, if I may, I want to begin with the winners. And our first one up is David Gonzalez. Sorry, I should've invited you guys to come out, so... David is a first grader at Swiegel Elementary School. As you could see from the artwork up on the screen there, it's pretty awesome. He did the globe and people doing various recycling things. And he has the most stylish haircut in the city of Salem.
Can you put it down a little bit? It's like, oh, perfect. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Thank you, David.
In our middle school category, we had Alexis Reeves, who's a sixth grader from Howard Street Charter School. And you can also see from her artwork, she kind of did the theme also of less is more, less electricity is more activity. And, just very cool. She's got the cat and the TV set's unplugged. This is her second time?
No, third.
A third time? Oh, my gosh.
Wait a minute.
I wonder what her career's going to be.
She has a T-shirt that says "Three Peds."
Yes. Thank you, Alexis. In our high school category, we had Victoria Conchola. She's a ninth grader at Early College High School. Victoria, if you could come on up?
Thank you.
And she did the no-plastic-bottle artwork up there with the big X through the various un-repurposeable bottles. Thank you, Victoria. And then our grand prize winner is Sean Collier, Sprague High School. He's an eleventh grader there. And Sean did the artwork for the... He won the grand prize. All of our students won a gift card for $50, but Sean also got a $100 gift card since his artwork was used on the top of the poster. You did a wonderful job there, Sean. And so, I'd also like to... You know, teachers play a critical role in the success of this contest, and so we want to recognize them for their hard work. Therefore, I'd like to invite Sprague's art teacher, high school teacher Connie Tolan to come up. She would. Connie will receive a $500 gift card to help offset the cost of various art supplies in her classroom. And her student Sean, as I mentioned, was the ground prize winner, so that's why she's up here. Thank you so much, Ms. Tolan. So, do we want to get them all up here for a picture? Okay. You guys all come back up? Group photo with the Commissioners.
Can I get the logo?
Logo?
David, come on up.
Yeah, just kind of... Right in front. Yeah.
Get right here. Connie, can you get in a little closer?
Yeah, there you go. Okay. And Victoria, yep. There we go. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Well done. Thank you all.
(inaudible).
Yeah, you look good like that. So, I want to also throw out here that the posters are available and they're free, but you can visit Marion County Public Works. We have them out there. You can also give us a call at 503-365-3180. I'm sure you all wrote that down. And we're out at 5155 Silverton Road. Now, if that's not convenient, you can also, if you're in northern Marion County, you can go to the Mid Valley Garbage and Recycling Association. And I do want to give them a shout-out because they did help with this... They got the gift cards to distribute to the kids. Todd Irvine, who represents them, could not be here this morning. But they're up in Brooks, and you can call them at 503-390-4000. Is there any way we could find a place here at the courthouse where people could swing by and pick up some posters?
Of course.
We typically had them up at the board's office.
Board's office?
Yeah.
Sure, on the fifth floor.
Okay, so, fifth floor of the Marion County Courthouse at the Board of Commissioners office. That's perfect. We'll get you guys a big snack of it.
I don't know if CCTV can zoom in on that. From... That's what the front of the calendar looks like. And then here's the back of it. It's a different format this year.
Yes, different format. So, they're all there.
So, if I put one of these up at my house in my office, which is where I have... For some reason, that's the only place I ever look at a calendar, I don't have to flip the pages anymore.
You don't. It's an energy-saving device. Thank you, Commissioners.
And paper-saving, Alan.
Yes.
Yeah.
Ten-four.
Alan, thank you very much. And for those of you that are watching and are interested, do you know, Alan, when is our next master recycling class going to start?
It'll be in September.
September of this year, of '17. Alan's one of the instructors and leads that for Marion County, and I got to take that a couple of years ago. It was a very good class. I don't know if I've got enough hours in to actually get my final certificate or not, but I keep limping along with the volunteer hours. I've been trying to educate Sam. Do I get credit for that? Okay. All right. Nice job. You want to comment about this?
No, it is a nice job, but I look ahead on key dates. So, I looked at my birthday. I'm not happy. June 11th. It's a Sunday. Nobody wants to do... Come to... And I'll be 65. It's a key date. I'm sure there'll be a wake.
Wow.
Awake?
Yeah.
Well, we'll just have to celebrate it on Monday.
Would you?
Yeah, we'll do it.
All right.
It's interesting, because I was just looking, somebody had 10 days till Christmas up on a calendar up there, and I said, well, that means it's 106 days till my birthday. It's interesting, we're talking about our own birthdays today.
It's all about you.
This program's gone on for quite a while, recognized a lot of great kids, and got them thinking, as they draw these, about the different aspects of recycling, the good they can do. And I'm pretty happy about it. I might even say, and I shouldn't, that I kind of helped start it years ago. Just so you know.
Well, and I do my, you know, to reduce, I use my 10-cup fishing derby thing for my hydro flask water every day. I do lots of different things, and I learned a lot in that class, Alan, that's really made a difference in my own home. And we're going to try to get the building here earthwise certified. It's amazing that Marion County's... Or, I want to say, our home office is not earthwise certified, so we're going to work on that. Jolene in our office, and Christie, and I think a few other people. So, thanks for all you do. Okay, we might want to get into some business. Consent calendar?
I think it's my turn.
Your turn? Okay.
All right, Mr. Chair. I would move today's consent calendar. Under Board of Commissioners, approve a resolution to designate John Latimer as the official representative to the Courthouse Square Condominium Association, and consider approval of a memorandum of action electing... Actually, we would be approving a memorandum of action electing John Latimer and Alan Pollak as directors of the Courthouse Square Condominium Association. Under Public Works, schedule a final consideration adopting an administrative ordinance granting zone change case number 16-002 Lancaster Opportunities LLC, Clerk's File Number 5717 for December 21st, 2016. Approve a grant agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for the Ferry Boat Program Phase III for $132,800. Receive a hearings officer's decision denying partition case 16-014 Kaufman, Clerk's File Number 5719. Under the Sheriff's Office, approve the contract for services with Salem Hospital for an estimated $192,000 for inmate medical services. Under Tax Office, approve a property tax refund in the amount of $19,211.56 to Bank of the Cascades.
I'll second the motion.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay. So, our first action item today is... Looks like you, Commissioner.
It is.
To consider approval of a resolution authorizing property tax exemptions of up to $250,000 assessed value of a homestead to surviving spouses of fallen public safety officers in Marion County pursuant to Senate Bill 1513.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Last week, we held a public hearing on this issue. Senate Bill 1513 was passed by the 2016 legislature. It authorizes counties to adopt either ordinances or resolutions to provide this property tax We were first approached by Silverton Mayor Rick Lewis, who asked if we would consider doing this for people... It's first responders, families of first responders who have lost their lives in the line of duty. So, this includes fire service professionals, police officers, reserve officers. And the property tax exemption applies to all taxing jurisdictions. So, by Marion County passing this, actually, the exemption means that the school districts, the cities, and others would not receive the taxes from that particular homestead. We, as Board of Commissioners, had a discussion about this, I think, in a work session or management update. And then, we were provided with an issue brief, did a little bit of research, how many people would this mean? While the research isn't by any means definitive, certainly it proved that there were just probably a small number out there that this would apply to, and the fiscal impact wouldn't be significant for any of the jurisdictions that would be affected. We spoke about this issue with the various officials from cities that we meet with around the county through late summer, early fall. Did not get any major objections to this. We actually were contacted by the, I think it's the Volunteer Firefighters, right, their association? And they sent a letter that we had brought into the record at our public hearing, and they were very much supportive of this. The Public Safety Coordinating Council reviewed the proposal and actually endorsed it and recommended it to the Board of Commissioners. So, now we are at the place where, as Commissioners, we would approve implementing Senate Bill 1513, and I believe we are doing that through resolution. We're not able to bring up the documentation. But if we were to do it by ordinance, that means that we would be sending it out for a vote of the people. If we do it by resolution, that means that we're not required to do that. So, that is the recommended action, and I would go ahead and move that the Board adopt the resolution that would implement Senate Bill 1513 in Marion County.
I'll second it, and just one comment. I was with Mayor Lewis yesterday. He asked about how the process was going, said he's still very much in support, and was very pleased that when I told him it's... We'll be finished very soon. So, I'll second the motion.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Good piece of good policy, but it will help a few people that need it. Okay, our next action item, I see the information technology people coming to the table, so... Are they supposed to be asking us for anything when our computers are down?
Do you have a PowerPoint presentation?
I don't. I just have some notes.
Yeah, and you're probably about to be...
Yeah, I want you to come over to the side. It's easier for the microphones and the cameras. Consider approval of purchase order with CDWG to provide Nimble Storage hard drives, support premium extended service agreements, expansion shelves, and four-hour parts delivery support for $316,812 through December 2017. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom, for IT Director.
And Ken Pearson.
Pull that microphone up a little closer, Tom, so we can make sure you're getting picked up. Thanks.
Okay, we're here this morning to request approval to move forward...
A little closer.
...with the purchase of new enterprise storage. Our goals in this purchase are to replace aging enterprise storage systems, increase capacity, performance, and features, replace aging storage connectivity, replace aging backup and recovery systems. We are nearing capacity on our enterprise storage, which support over 250 servers and support new projects like the Oracle 12-2 enhancement project, and also projects like the health records management system. They're adding quite a few images to our enterprise storage. Also, our primary backup and recovery systems are at capacity. We've been moving several backups to tape-only storage and also using end-of-life storage to supplement our storage capacity issues. Mission-critical and business-critical needs are being met currently. This product that we're proposing is on state price agreement. It's through a company called CDWG and Nimble Storage. Nimble Storage has been in the industry for over 10 years. They have 8,100 customers, over 300 in this area. Folks like the city of Eugene, Clerkamas County, Amazon, Nassau, Deschutes County, and others are using this product. These products are getting great reviews from industry research organizations like Gartner and InfoTech. And Gartner, they're in the leader category, and number one in completeness for general purpose storage arrays. As part of this purchase, we're going to do a proof-of-concept, which means we're going to try it before we buy it. So, as part of your packet, there was quite a few proof-of-concept criteria that we're going to use to evaluate this product during the test period, probably January. So, we want to make sure it has seamless integration with our virtualization of our server environment, Oracle systems, and SQL servers, and others. Staff has been reviewing this product for a long time. They feel this solution is the best fit based on our requirements and the feature set of the product. In talking with Deschutes County, they love this product. It's highly recommended for its ease of use, and vendor upgrades work very smoothly with this product. Salem Kaiser Transit is also currently a customer of theirs and like the product also. Product highlights: We should increase our performance on our storage response by sixfold, reduce infrastructure complexity and long-term maintenance costs. It's also a product that's an all-inclusive software licensing product, which means all future releases, modules, and enhancements will get as part of our maintenance fees. They also have a flat annual maintenance support fee. So, when you buy this product, they'll give you a support price, and that will be the price for the length of... For the length of the life of the product, which we haven't been seeing with a lot of the other vendors. So, that should save us money in the long term. Also, it'll enhance our backup and recovery capabilities. This product has some technology that will allow us to recover from viruses or down systems, which could take us days or hours, and potentially minutes with some of the technology involved in this product. It also is integrated into our provisioning system when we build servers. Now, we will build a server and storage as one kind of pane of glass, so the staff will have to have less knowledge about the storage systems, and provisioning new systems will be faster. I took a presentation to our IT Governance Committee on November 18th, and they liked what we had to say. They liked the product, so they approved me moving forward with talking with you today about this recommendation. So, again, I'm here today to recommend the purchase of the Nimble products off the state price agreement with CDWG on successful completion of the proof-of-concept project. What questions do you have for us today?
Tom, if you said, I just didn't hear, how long will it take to have this equipment product delivered and actually installed?
Once we sign the proof-of-concept paperwork or agreement, about two weeks to get it here, and there's a 45-day window on that review. And then, likely, we'll be signing a purchase order if we accept it. If not, we'll be returning the equipment and going down probably another path off either the state pricing agreement or some other vehicle. So, likely, it'll be in production beginning of February. Okay. Any questions?
I don't have any questions.
And then Chair Cameron, if I could, I would make a motion. We approve the purchase order with CDWG to... For parts and delivery support for $316,812 through December 31st, 2017.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion second. Any further discussion? I guess my microphone was off, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Good luck.
Okay, our next item is Public Works. Consider adoption of an administrative ordinance granting legislative amendment LA 16-002 regarding amendments to Marion County Code Title 16 Urban Zone Code and Title 17 Rural Zone Code. Welcome, Joe.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Joe Fenimore. The assignment before you today is to consider adoption of an administrative ordinance amending the Marion County Urban and Rural Zone Codes by emergency procedure. The Board initiated the amendments by resolution in March 2016. The purpose of the amendment is to adopt provisions to regulate medical marijuana businesses. The matter was referred to the Planning Commission, which held a public hearing on August 16th, or on August 2016, and at a subsequent work session issued a recommendation to the Board on the types of regulations that it felt should be applied to marijuana businesses. The recommendation was presented to the Board at a work session in September. The Board held a public hearing on the matter on November 30th, 2016, and approved the amendments and directed staff to prepare the appropriate ordinance for consideration. The ordinance has been prepared, is now set for adoption by emergency procedure. The Board has the options of adopting the ordinance before you, direct staff to prepare a modified ordinance, or choose not to adopt the ordinance at this time. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So, we have discussed this. We've been through this, and I don't have any questions. Any further discussion?
Well, just... Joe was really brief, so I think, I mean, this is the final step, right? And we've had... We've actually... Did we have a public hearing on this?
You had a public hearing on November 30th, yes.
Right, okay. And so, then, at that public hearing, we also talked about the... Well, but nobody came and actually...
We had no one testify. That's correct.
We had no one that testified, so that was kind of brief, too. So, just to... But Joe, maybe you could just take a couple of minutes and summarize what the content is of those changes that we're making?
So, as recall, the county adopted a moratorium on marijuana businesses. We referred it to the voters. There were recreational businesses and medical businesses, as two separate ballot measures. The recreational measure failed, so the ban stays in place, a moratorium. The medical measure passed, allowing medical marijuana businesses in Marion County. We started a process way back in March to look at possible regulations to adopt if the moratorium were lifted. We prepared Zone Code amendments that basically growing medical marijuana is permitted outright in the farm zones as farm use. However, we are requiring it to be indoors and visible grow lights to be turned off between 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM. We're allowed to do that. All other grows would have to take place in an industrial zone with a conditional use permit. All processing would take place in an industrial zone with a conditional use permit. And dispensaries would have to be in a commercial zone with a conditional use permit. We had the ban exemption permit that allowed dispensaries with certain regulations, distances from schools and daycares, background checks, hours of operations. All those are rolled into the Zone Code now and required as part of the conditional use That pretty much sums up what we've done.
Very good. Thank you. So, Mr. Chair, we go ahead then and move that we adopt this administrative ordinance? We don't have to do it by title only or whatever, right?
We do it, yes, in emergency, so we need to do it.
We're doing it by emergency?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't have it. Yeah, we won't have it in front of us.
I can't get to it.
Uh, let me see.
Great.
Let's see where we are here.
I'm sorry, did you finish your motion or just...
No, just a second. I'm going to get it up here.
I can get in, but I can't find the board session now, so...
Okay. All right, yeah, our agenda didn't say this was by emergency, but probably should have. Okay, so, I would move that the Chair read the title of this ordinance by title only twice.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. So, the Chair will read by title twice. In the matter of an ordinance amending Marion County Code Title 16 Urban Zone Code and Title 17 Rural Zone Code by amending provisions and declaring an emergency. In the matter of an ordinance amending Marion County Title 16 Urban Zone Code and Title 17 Rural Zone Code by amending provisions and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Chair, I would move that the Board adopt this administrative ordinance amending Marion County Code Title 16 the Urban Zone Code and Title 17 the Rural Zone Code and declaring an emergency.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for all that work, for all these, what, months and years, it seems like. I don't think we're done, though, Joe. I think...
There's more to come.
I think there's more to come in the future.
A little breathing room.
Well, yeah, a little breathing room is good. Okay, and I think that ends our official business for the day. I'll read the calendar. Today, the 14th, 10 days till Christmas, and is at 10 o'clock, work session on the Oregon Garden up on the fifth floor in the Silverton Conference Room here in this building. Today at 3 o'clock is the Governor's Reentry Council. Location is at the Oregon State Capitol in Room 350, 900 Court Street, Northeast. Assuming we don't get a bunch of snow, they'll probably keep that on the schedule. Thursday, tomorrow, on the 15th, at 8:00 AM, the city of Salem and Marion County meeting. Location is at the Sassy Onion, 1244 State Street, Salem. Monday, the 19th, at 8:30 AM, a calendar review in the Silverton Conference Room here on the fifth floor at 555 Court Street, Northeast Salem. And Monday at 9:00 AM, management update here on the fifth floor in the... And Monday at 9:00 AM, management update here on the fifth floor in the Silverton Conference Room. Also, Monday at 3:00 PM on the 19th, the Honorable Dale Penn, Dale Penn's Retirement Celebration. Location is at the Marion County Courthouse, across the street from here, in the Jury Room Assembly at 100 High Street, Salem. On Tuesday, 12:20, at 9:30 AM, a work session for Marion County Fair Annual Review. It's up in the Board, location is the Commissioner's Boardroom, not the Ballroom, on the fifth floor at 555 Court Street Northeast here in this building. On Tuesday, the 20th, at 2:00 PM, the Marion County Jail Tour. Location is at the Marion County Jail 4000 Almstville Highway, Salem. On Wednesday, the 21st, we're back here for our second-to-last, I think, board session of the year. I'm, gee, I'm, I'm getting to be a short timer as the Chair. So, that's the calendar.
Yeah, you'll have to turn it over to the guy to your left.
It's kind of squishy, you know, I've been putting it on him, I'm, I want him to be perfect, and, because I know I'm not, so I want to just lay that out there already for next year, but you came pretty close introducing this, this meeting this morning. I couldn't, I couldn't find a fault, let's go that far.
Good, so now I can go downhill, I took me all year to get to the top, and now I can go downhill.
A little more enthusiastic presentation, but that's just subtle stuff that doesn't really matter.
Yeah.
I think you were close.
Okay.
There is one thing I would comment on, seriously, I see Dale Penn's retirement. I know judges, they still have duties and functions after they're done, but he's a good one, and I've enjoyed so much. First met him, he was our district attorney, then he left, just went to lottery, and now back as, as a judge, and, what's the official name of the leader of the judges?
The presiding.
Presiding, how hard is that? But he is a good one, and a good friend of mine.
You know, one of the things you can tell about people when they have children is, is how their children turned out as, as individuals, and his son that I've known over the last probably 10 or 12 years is, is a outstanding citizen himself, and that's always a great reflection.
I've just met him a couple times, he's with the lobbying firm, is that correct?
CFM.
CFM, yeah, but he's done other things through those 10 years or 12 years, and it's always great to, you know, see, see our children do well, and it's a reflection on, on the things that, things that happen as, as individuals, but Dale's been around a long time. When was he, the DA?
I want him, I want, I'll just say it out loud, I want him to write a book. He has stories that are every bit as significant as Kennedy's Profiles in Courage, I mean, and the theme is always the same, and multiple stories, and don't get me wrong, it's where you do the right thing, and there's consequences to you, punishments, whatever, but in the end, it comes out correct, and those are stories people need, I'm, I've told them, write that thing.
So, two more funny stories that he had. One is that he described a time when he was selected for jury duty. I've told this story to people several times, and it sounds like he made it all the way up where they were doing questioning, and, and he says he's thinking to himself, any minute now, one of my employees is going to walk out the door, do you really want me on this jury? He eventually got dismissed, but he was on there long enough to-
They took him all the way, on purpose, you think?
To give him a scare, I don't know if he just thought the people were clueless, or what, but he-
When he was the DA-
When he was the DA, right, he got called to jury duty, and he was like actually sitting at a criminal trial jury and being questioned, and, you know, he thought he'd immediately just go in, and you know how they'll dismiss you before you ever get onto a jury, but no, he made it quite a ways up, so. He tells it with a lot of flair, I don't tell it nearly as well. But the other one I remember, so he was the district attorney when Sam and I were the first, first year, right, and I think he retired shortly after that, maybe a year or two, right, yeah. So, it was the, I think it was late December, about this time, and there was an ice storm that came in, and it was like, I had the flu, and I was going to stay home that day, and I was woken up like at, you know, 4:00 in the morning, and then all of a sudden, we had to figure out what we were going to do, and we didn't have policies in place that anybody was familiar with, and they weren't on the internet, they were on the internet, and I've told those stories before, but, so the management update that we had right before that meeting, Dale Penn was in the room, and there were, he'd been there forever, and Laverne had been there forever, and, you know, so there were always, all these people, and, and they were talking about, you know, what would we do if the county closed? And Dale's like, oh, it's never closed in 20 years, I've been here, and so then like about four days later, I'm faced with this, like, the state was closing, you know, the roads and state police, they were on TV telling nobody, you know, everybody, don't go out of your homes, and so it was really interesting, but I just remember him, you know, just very wryly saying, you know, that'll never happen, that hasn't happened in his lifetime, so.
Let's hope it doesn't happen this afternoon or tomorrow.
Yeah, exactly, I thought that was a timely story to tell.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm hoping that some of my meetings get canceled, because I want to go right along with one of our Sanders.
What do you want out of, we'll get you out of it.
Oh, most of my, well, the Governor's Reentry Council, it's probably going to cancel.
Governor's Reentry Council, we already got rid of, we canceled CCTV.
Right.
And you know what, I think I left my phone at my workout this morning, I don't know where my schedule is, I'll have to, I'll have to-
Yeah, I lost three things on Saturday, but I found them all, it's like I spent my whole life looking for things.
Now, let's talk about this a little bit, are you people having some issues, is it seasonal, I'll ask you why. So, I drive you to Woodburn, you leave your calendar, and I find out that nothing can happen until Janet has her calendar back.
It's on the floor of his car.
I have to come back.
I have my scarf.
Oh, really?
And then he calls, could you please bring my scarf, I can't survive without my scarf, and I'm thinking, come on, you guys, as bad as kids.
Well, I left, then on Saturday, I left my scarf, my favorite scarf, at the church, we had a church Christmas breakfast, and I was visiting my mother, and then I realized when I was walking out, no scarf around my neck, what'd I do with it, oh my gosh, and then, you know, it was locked, I had to get in, and everything, we found it.
Maybe we need to refocus, let's just make that our group.
And Jess, our daughter-in-law, who's there, lost her phone, and then there was a third thing that we lost.
Fortunately, on my phone, you can, I can go, my iPad's here, so I can do my, find my iPhone and see where it really is, it'll tell me where it's at.
I just leave pieces of myself all over, it's just, not good.
Fine.
So, Salem breakfast, we'll have to decide what we do about that tomorrow morning, too, because if it's really icy, we may not want to-
Yeah, I've got the Suburban, and I got chains if I need to put it on, I'll go wherever we need to go.
Okay.
But they may not want to come, so we need to know, but I'm, I will come.
You know, you know those city councils.
Little weather.
They're city folk. Little, us, us country folk, we can get around in the snow.
I'm city folk.
I know you are. Like, you better get in that little car, you can't get home before it starts snowing today.
It drives pretty well.
It's talking mid-morning, so, what else, I don't, I don't, my, what, oh, we had our dinner last night?
That was nice.
That was-
This was a county caucus, so these are-
Yes.
-county commissioners who have been legislators, and then we invited legislative leadership.
Commissioners who have been county commissioners.
Some of them, not all of them, they just invited legislative leadership, so my view was it was a good meeting, but too much talk from the legislators.
Yeah, well, that's-
That's just, that's just right.
It's not abnormal.
Yeah, that's too easy, that's right, that's a comment.
It's not abnormal.
I mean, there was some back and forth, but yeah, and the commissioners that spoke, it kind of became speeches rather than dialogue, I would really have preferred us to kind of have more of a back and forth, but in a group that large-
Which the first time it was, remember?
Yeah, it really was, and that, yeah.
The first time we had a really good dialogue, and-
Yeah. Seems kind of formal.
The, the leadership was not there, I mean, you had assistant leader, and, well, you had, it was great to have the co-chair there, that was, that was good, he-
Yeah, Richard Devlin did a fabulous job.
Did a really good job, Richard did, describing the budget, and-
He said it was his 17th meeting yesterday that he had been to.
He'd been, yeah, and then he say he'd been in the legislature for 20 years?
Yes, I think that.
I think.
Yeah, well, it's probably, yeah, he was there when, I mean, we were on the Commerce Committee together.
Yeah, so, that was good.
So, anything come out that got their attention from the counties that might be helpful to us?
Well, you know, I thought the most compelling discussion, you know, I was going to say something, I didn't end up saying anything, because, you know, it's just kind of like whatever, but-
No, 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 it wouldn't have been appropriate.
Right, but Susan Morgan, and this might have been after you left, talked about the pass-through dollars, and this is the thing that's concerned me, you were there, good, right? And, but her saying it from Douglas County's perspective is a lot more compelling than from our perspective, because they, she and David Brocksmith and Tim Josie and others in smaller counties where timber monies, you know, like comprised a lot of their county general fund, and when federal forest, state forest, that revenue doesn't come in, and that they're tax-based, you know, they talked a lot about Measures 5, 47, and 50, and how it's constraining their property tax revenues, because they were frozen at this really low rate, can't get beyond it, and so on, you know the whole story. So, she says that any of those pass-through funds that come for the assessors, for the clerks, for public safety, and so on, those become direct service cuts at the county level, because they don't have the general fund to backfill to keep the programs whole. And, you know, we struggle to backfill, and, you know, we've had some policies around when the state pulls the money, right, yeah, exactly, but, you know, I was just thinking about the budget discussion that we've had recently at our retreat, and how different the situation is for us than for those counties-
Right.
-that have those struggles with, with the, with the forest, with the timber money. But she just, she, she said it very, very well, and, and I just thought she said it so much better, it was so much more compelling than what I could have said if I would have given the same message.
And the compression, they described the compression, that they're, they're down here, but they have all these special districts around them, they've been formed to survive, and so even if they were to raise, they would, you know, do levies or whatever, they'd have compression in their libraries, or whatever, yeah.
It just redistributes the money.
Yeah, it's the same money, just goes different places. So, that was a good, that was good.
Yeah.
And David Brock, and then her, right after that, I think, or it was vice versa, but having that, those two perspectives, there was a very good rural representation there, and I'm trying to think who was, who was, well, you had Jessica, um, um-
Oh, Vega Peterson.
Vega Peterson from Portland, who is still rep, but will become a county commissioner.
Multnomah County?
Multnomah County, I served with her in the legislature, and, so she was probably Multnomah County, who else was there, from Washington, I don't know that the tri, was it Clackamas represented, I didn't see-
I don't think so.
Clackamas wasn't there? So, there wasn't the, the urban representation around the table. You know, you had Gelsner, who was from, from-
Corbella's.
Yeah, but even from a legislative standpoint, there wasn't, you know, Tina wasn't there.
Right.
So, you know, I, I heard from Richard that, okay, maybe most of my colleagues get, get this, too, but they, they may, he may say they get it, but they don't act like it.
Well, they don't act on it, either.
Right, that's what I meant, right.
Because if they got it, they would be putting together some sort of a task force to deal with how, how do we deal with distressed counties and property taxes and that kind of thing. Well, yeah, I mean, it's, it's very, very complicated, and the, well, interestingly, I mean, one of the things that I was thinking, but I didn't say, is that when I was in the legislature, the impacts to local governments, I mean, it was almost an afterthought on the bills, you only, you zeroed in on what the impact was to the state general fund, but you didn't zero in on what it was to the local governments. At AOC on Monday, Rob Bovet was talking about his interactions with legislative council, and how when he puts an X in the box for an impact to local government, particularly around the unfunded mandate, and he highlights it, he said it's no longer just suggestion, but what he's telling them is counties are starting to sue. We had this discussion about Lynn County and other counties suing over this sick leave and the unfunded mandate piece to that, and whether it's a program, and, and that type of thing. And, so I think, I mean, really, the only way to get legislators to pay attention is to have it where it goes to the courts, and then all of a sudden, the courts are saying, sorry, we're going to throw out your law, legislators, because, you know, you can't impose this on local governments, or, or local governments, you don't have to do the sick leave program, but everybody else in the private sector does, so that creates confusion. But I think that the property tax piece falls right in that same type of perspective, you know, it's an impact to local government, it doesn't impact the services that they provide at the state level.
You just made me think of something, and I'm not going to lay it all out correctly to give you, but I attended Greenhouse Gas rulemaking with DLCD yester thing, and it should be the last one, but two impact statements, apparently after you write rules, you have to, you have to file with the impact to the Secretary of State's office, and their answer was, there is no impact because these are voluntary, but it's just disingenuous, because if you don't do these things, then there will be consequences, so I, that was the last, I had to leave for Silverton, Norton Garden meeting, I said, this, this just isn't right, you can't just leave that, you have to say to be correct, that as long as this is voluntary, there is no impact, but just to say there is none is deceit.
Right. Well, the other interesting thing about administrative rules is, then they'll ask for comments, and they don't have to do anything with the comments, they can just say, thank you very much, put it in the pile, and then just continue on, so.
Good reentry meeting yesterday, got our-
Yeah.
Name, got our name fixed, right?
We're now the Marion County Justice Reinvestment-
I like the sound of it.
Right, instead of the reentry council, because we're broader than just reentry. And we're going to be the governance group for lead, law enforcement, assisted diversion, this is what Paige Clarkson talked about at the breakfast that we had, about working with people who are chronic substance abusers that are not successful in treatment, and it's modeled after a program in Seattle, they've got, they're replicating it at Multnomah County and elsewhere.
Okay.
We have a 10 o'clock, so-
All right, we will, I'll find some wood gavel here, we will adjourn.